Good night, everyone who is here and those online. Welcome to our tonight's Bible study. We'll begin with the singing of the hymn, "What a Fellowship, What a Joy Divine, Leaning on the Everlasting Arms." What a fellowship, what a joy divine, leaning on the everlasting arms. What a blessed dance, what a peace is mine, leaning on the everlasting arms. safe and secured from all alarms. leaning on the everlasting arms. Oh, how sweet to walk in this pilgrim way, leaning on the everlasting arms. Oh, how bright the path grows from day to day, leaning on the everlasting arms. safe and secured from all alarms. leaning on the everlasting arms. What have I to dread, what have I to fear, leaning on the everlasting arms? I have blessed peace with my Lord so near, leaning on the everlasting arms. Leaning on Jesus, leaning, safe and secured from all alarms. Leaning on Jesus, leaning, leaning on the everlasting arms. Well, we thank the Lord for His strength and power and His love for us. And we can just lean on Him, lean on His everlasting arms, always there to accept us, waiting on us. Thank you, Lord. We'll now go to prayer. Any requests from the few of us that are here? Prayer for overcomers. Sunday School. Yeah. Any other requests? All right, we go to the Throne of Grace. Father, we thank You for another evening that we will spend together around Your words, mighty God. We thank You, Lord Jesus, for this opportunity. And, Lord, we do not take it for granted. Father, we come to You with our requests, mighty God. We take the overcomers to You, Lord. We present each member of the Overcomers Department of this assembly in Your hands, Lord Jesus. And we pray, Lord, that You will touch them, mighty God. We pray, Lord, that You will cover them with Your blood, mighty God. Lord Jesus, they are Your children. And, Father, You see the desires of their heart. Mighty God, we pray, Lord, that You will inspire them, mighty God. You will strengthen them more and more. You'll give them the desire, Lord, to see young people like themselves coming to know You, Lord Jesus. So, Father, we pray that You will equip them and continue to bind them together and cause them, Lord, to grow from strength to strength, Lord Jesus. As they continue to plan, Lord, we pray that sooner than later, their plans will come to fruit. And, Lord, that they will start in a mighty way, mighty God. Pray, Lord Jesus, that they will depend upon You and trust You to overcome, as their name is, to overcome whatever challenges that they are going through and to see growth and to see miracles happening amongst them, my God. Father, we pray for the Sunday School Department. We see the need, mighty God, for teachers. Lord Jesus, we pray, Lord, that You will speak to those of us, oh God, who are able, those of us, oh Lord, who have an inclination to teach, but maybe shy or maybe have a challenge with time or other challenges. We pray, Lord God, that as they depend upon You, Lord, and as we trust You to bring them through, to bring them here, to cause them, Lord, to commit themselves, we pray, Lord God, that You will speak to them, Lord Jesus, and You will help them to work out their situations. So, we are waiting, oh God, on You to provide, to provide capable hands, capable teachers, mighty God, who will be committed to this task. Father, we pray for... We bring the other requests to You, Lord Jesus. I can't recall them right now. But, Lord, whatever is on our hearts, Lord, we present them to You, present them at Your feet. And we pray, Lord Jesus, that we will take them to You as often as we can, Lord. We will speak to You, we'll commune with You as friend with friend, as a father. And, Lord, just wait upon You to do what Your will is, Lord, in our situations, in our lives. So, Lord, as we continue tonight and about to go in the Word, we pray, Lord, that You will bless our hearts, You will open our hearts to accept, to learn, and, Lord Jesus, to come up with questions, to open our minds even wider and our appetite even wider, Lord Jesus. So, Father, we just bless Your name for what You are about to do in our midst, in our lives. And we say thanks in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Doreen. Good evening, everybody. And for those who are going to be joining us later online, good evening or good time of day whenever you get to view this. Let's move ahead. Father, we thank You for the privilege again of coming to look into Your Word. And like our sister Doreen prayed, create thirst in us, Lord God, not just to hear and be stimulated academically, but, Lord God, to create fire, passion in us, not just to be hearers, but to be doers of Your Word. Speak to us by Your Holy Spirit, quickening truth that will move us forward in becoming what You want us to be. Here our prayer we ask you, in Jesus' name. All right. We are off to a later start than normal. So, we are going to go straight into tonight's study without any recap of what has been done in the earlier sessions. Tonight, we want to look at helps in prayer and hindrances to prayer. And right away, we want to identify three helps to our prayer: the word of God, the Spirit of God, and the people of God. Three helps to our prayer: the word of God, the Spirit of God, and the people of God. James, chapter 2, verse 14 to verse 26, and John 15, verse 1 to verse 8, are our references for the word of God as a help in our prayer lives, how we pray, what we pray for. John 15, verse 1 to 8. Do we have the first volunteer to read? Hold on there, brother Pedro.
I am the true grapevine, and my Father is the gardener. He cuts off every branch of mine that doesn't produce fruit, and he prunes the branches that do bear fruit, so they will produce even more. You have already pruned and purified by the message. You have already been pruned and purified by the message I have given you. Remain in Me, and I will remain in you; for a branch cannot produce fruit if it is severed from the vine; and you cannot be fruitful unless you remain in Me. Yes, I am the vine; you are the branches. Those who remain in Me and I in them will produce much fruit; for apart from Me you can do nothing. Anyone who does not remain in Me is thrown away like a useless branch and withers. Such branches are gathered into a pile to be burned. But if you remain in Me and My words remain in you, you may ask for anything you want, and it will be granted. When you produce much fruit, you are My true disciples. This brings great glory to My Father.
Thank you, sir. Now, you will recall last week and in preceding weeks, we were emphasizing the fact that our obligation, our anchor in prayer, was to pray for the will of God and in the name of Jesus. Here, Jesus strengthens what He was teaching the disciples in St. John, chapter 14, by saying, "It is important, necessary, unavoidable for you to bear fruit." He sets the progress, the progression of the relationship that we have with Him when He says that you are already clean because of the word which I have spoken to you. It is in our taking heed to the word of God why we even set out to walk this Christian walk, why we even set out to enter into relationship with Jesus Christ, because of what the power, the conviction of His word says to us. If the word shows us where we were or where we are and what we need to become what is going to be pleasing to God. We go a little further. He says, "You must abide in Me," because it is in abiding in Me that you are going to bear fruit. What do we know or how do we know what God wants unless we understand what His word says, what His heart requires, what He is after? Me and you can sit down here and make it up. We can do all kinds of things that do more to please us than they do to please God. He says, "I am the vine; you are the branches." The branch cannot bear fruit unless it abides in the vine. Same way, you can't bear fruit unless you abide in Me. Go down to verse 6. What happens if we are not abiding in the vine? We become withered. When we stop read the Bible and it stop take root in our heart, we don't know what we must aim for. We don't have anything to encourage us or to sustain us when trials come. And we wither and fall away. Verse 7, "If you abide in Me and My words abide in you." So, we are moving to just... No, we're moving from just entering into relationship to wanting to produce fruits. And now we go to a kind of fellowship that is based on abiding in Him and Him abiding in us through His word. And that fellowship, that abiding in Him, gives us right, freedom, privilege, to ask what we desire. And somebody said, "No, but hold on there, pastor. Last week, it was in His name according to His will." Remember? And now Jesus is saying, "Ask what you desire." Hello? So, is there a contradiction in that? If we are being encouraged to pray in His name, pray according to His will, and now we're being encouraged, abide in Him, My words abide in you, then you might ask whatever you desire. Is there a conflict there? No?
Being in fellowship with Him will bring you to the point where you'll know what His will is. So, you'll know what to ask, how to ask.
Same thing, all right. So, there's absolute truth in that. When we just come, we might want to ask what we desire. But as we progress and we abide more in Him and He abides more in us, then we're going to be a little more sensitive to what He might be asking and what He would desire. Yeah, and we're going to love what Him love. So, there is a progression. Then, in James, chapter 2, from verse 14 to 26, and we're not reading it. It's just for us to make the note and go home and dig it up for ourselves. James is making the point that when we profess faith, it is automatic that faith, that believing, is going to result in a behavior. Because we can't just believe a thing, and the thing that we believe is over there so, and we are over here, it is heading in that direction, and we are heading in the opposite direction. Our faith is going to affect what we believe, how we behave. We can't avoid the Word because the Word is God's will, recorded, expressed for our guidance. And when that guidance begins to take root in our lives, we want to do, we want to obey, we want to abide and have it abide in us. Abiding is different from head encounter or emotional encounter. It dwell in us, and we want to act it out. It is in the Word, then, that we learn how we should behave, how we learn what the Father wants to do and what the Father wants us to do. It is the word of God which is our guide as to how the Father wants us to live. And deepening our faith and walking closer with God are rooted in believing the Word and in abiding in the Word. That kind of view, that kind of openness to the Spirit of God is going to cause us to take stock because you realize that it's not just about gimme, 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 gimme things and opportunities and whatnot. It is going to challenge us to look a little deeper, to zoom in on praying for the will of God to be done and praying for the character that God wants to be formed in us. Now, that's a serious thing. When we stop putting the emphasis on things that our Father knows we have need of and start praying for the kingdom of God to come. Seek ye first the kingdom of God and His righteousness. Seek as the priority for your life, for my life, what God wants, not just in the world, but in me. And you're going to start in us first before it manifests in the world. How often do we zoom in on praying for transformation in our character? Father God, me tired for tell lie. Me tired for thief. Me tired for bad mind people for them things. You get the point I'm making? We spend the time and we make the effort. God changed me to reflect You, what You want. And then prayer isn't always comfortable because we like just get me things and go on. So, that's the word of God as our help in prayer. You can't please the master if you don't know what your master want. And when we grow to love Him more, the more we want to see what He wants come to pass. We're looking now at the Spirit of God as our help in prayer. The more you spend time learning what the Father wants through His word, the more you spend time praying. Remember, we say there's a progression. We're getting deeper and deeper in the walk with Him. We're not just now talking about being servants. We're talking about being friends of God. Jesus said, "I am taking from My Father. I have taken from My Father what He has taught Me and given it to you." So... But we have to admit, sometimes we start praying and we wonder, what else we must pray for? What is the priorities again? Well, I want to say something here. When we read God's word and when we look around us and look into ourselves, we're going to see the things by the Spirit of God that are of concern to God. And by virtue of that, they should become concerns to us too. Yes, the pastor, you know, this day and year, you are what I call them thing there? Hello? But remember, we represent Him. Remember, we are the man and the woman who is being called to stand in the gap. Remember, we say that we are now siding with His party. So, we want to see men saved and come into relationship with God just like we did. So, we're going to become involved in making petition. And when we make the petition and we don't know what to pray, Apostle Paul, Romans, chapter 8, 26 to 28, tells us where we get our help from. We already have the word of God alive in us. And by His grace, we are endeavoring to abide in the Word, stay faithful in our obedience to the Word. But Paul now says, Romans 8, 26 to 28, likewise, likewise. So, what would have gone on before? Likewise. So, likewise is copying something or making reference to something that went on before. Let's look at what would have gone on before in Romans, chapter 8, starting at verse 26. 26? No, let's look earlier than 26. Paul speaks from verse 23. "We also have the first fruits of the Spirit, even we ourselves grown within ourselves, eagerly waiting for the adoption, the redemption of our body, who want come out of sin completely. And we have this eager hope in us. We want the body to be so transformed that we go to heaven; for we were saved in this hope. But hope that is seen is not hope; for why does one still hope for what he sees? But if we hope for what we do not see, we eagerly wait for it with perseverance, looking for..." looking forward, reaching forward." So yes, we were sweetly saved, but we are looking for more as people of God. Hello? That makes sense, do we? So yes, we want to go to heaven. Yes, we are persevering. The only way to do it is by persevering. But Paul has something else by the Spirit of God to add to that. It's not just a longing that you have in your heart or me having on my heart. Eh? God is on your side to make that longing fulfilling and focused, give you more purpose in it. So yes, me and you want to go to heaven. We want to be redeemed. And any believer who doesn't want to go to heaven and doesn't want the whole body to be redeemed have a challenge. Paul says, same way you have this longing, is same way the Spirit of God hmm, helps us in our weakness. It's the same Paul who says that God's strength is made perfect in our weakness. The enabling that you and I need comes to us by the Spirit of God. And we don't know what to pray sometimes. Likewise, in the same way you are yearning, the Spirit of God is willing and keen and available to help us to overcome, to succeed, to persevere. He says, "The Spirit helps in our weaknesses." This longing way you have that you alone can help to bring to realization what you are striving for. The Holy Spirit is available to us to help us in those weaknesses. "God, I need help, and I do even know what to ask for." Anybody ever feel like that sometimes? Eh? A real, real something, you know? Paul says, "We do not know what we should pray for. We don't even know how to pray for it." We don't know what, we don't know how. But the Spirit Himself makes intercession for us with groanings which cannot be uttered. You ever find yourself sometime, I pray, and you don't know what more to say? And you just start, "Paul, Jesus, Jesus, Jesus." Or sometimes you not even said Jesus, you just are groaning. Hmm? And you can't pray in public like that now, because people say you're not articulate enough. Hello?
Yes, yes, yes.
You see why, you see why, you see why everyone, I will need a closet. Eh? Yeah, man, everyone, I will need a closet. Hello? All right. He says, "These groanings cannot be uttered. They not make public sense." But why is it important to have the Holy Spirit beside us, with us, praying through us? Well, He know a holy more than me and you know. He searches the hearts. So you not even know where you must pray for, but the Holy Spirit know. Hello? And we not have to doubt that, you know? The Holy Spirit is very much God. Very much God-like Father, very much God-like Son. Hello? He knows the heart. He knows the mind, God knows the mind of the Spirit, because the Spirit makes intercession for the saints. How? How? According to the will of God. By God. Sometimes, well, sometimes we see some things happening with life, and we can't tell how it happened. God's grace, God's mercy, the Spirit of God who knows what is in your heart one night long ago maybe, and put it in your heart, you've grown. We don't know these things. Eh? All we know for a fact is that the Father is on our side, and He has made every provision to make sure you live your best life. I'm coming back to that. Hear this. He makes intercession for saints, for the saints, according to the will of God, not according to their desires, according to the will of God. Saints don't have no problem with God giving them what God wants for them. By the grace of God, we're coming back to that too, because some people feel if me name saint and me don't get what me want, something must be wrong. Hello? A real something that? Yeah, man, sometime God care with some place and say, "But Father, I know this me a pray for, I know this me expect. How could a good God allow this to happen to me?" Think about Job, for example. Think about Paul, for example. Think about anyone of the apostles, for example. So we're not fool ourselves, because we are Christian, it does not mean that everything is going to be hunky-dory. We know, he says, "That all things work together for good to those who love God." The broken foot, the fall out of the tree, whatever it is, all things work together for good to them that love God, to those who are called according to His purposes. And it is our reaching for, it is our surrender to God that will allow us to accept that, that no matter if you don't answer me prayer, you are still my God, you are still my Lord. It is the relationship with me and Him have that can bring me to that place of confidence. Here, hear what the Amplified Bible says. Same twenty-six to twenty-eight. It says, "In the same way the Spirit comes to us and helps us in our weaknesses, we do not know what prayer to offer or how to offer it as we should; but the Spirit Himself knows our need and at the right time intercedes on our behalf with sighs and groanings too deep for words. And he who searches the hearts knows what the mind of the Spirit is; because the Spirit intercedes before God on behalf of God's people in keeping in accordance with God's will. We know with great confidence that God, who is deeply concerned about us, causes all things to work together as a plan for good to those who love God." Sometime here you'd see chaos, and God just have it in the palm of Him hand. If God can have the hollow or have the waters of the earth in the hollow of His hand, what are you worried about? And I'm trying to imagine that, because earth surfaces two-thirds water. Hello? Bible say, Isaiah, Isaiah what, forty? Don't remember the exact thing. It's that God have the waters in the hollow of His hand. My hand not even hollow enough. So we'll have cap of water. And me and you going worry, Sister Krista, when we not get the what? The recognition, the promotion, the money that we thought we were entitled to. Him still have you in the palm of your hand. So we pause to ponder again. How willing are we to accept that when we done pray and leave a matter to God, He will work out all things for our good? How can I question that? Because why I come to you, Lord, is for you to answer exactly the way I am asking you to. So this business of all things work together for good according to them that love God is at odds opposed to that kind of approach. A lie? Think about it. Sister Angela, we spend, we spend whole night of pray. We all call up, we're friending for pray with us. And then, when the answer come, it's not what we were expecting. Let's look at two examples in the life of one man where prayer was made, prophetic utterance was made, and still, things never go according to what he expected. Acts chapter eleven, twenty to thirty. We're going to read both of them. Acts chapter eleven, from verse twenty to thirty, and Acts twenty-one, from verse seven to fourteen. Acts eleven, twenty to thirty, and Acts chapter twenty-one, from seven to fourteen. All right. One second there, please.
The final?
Eleven, verse twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty to thirty. Twenty. "For the creation was subjected to futility, not willingly, but because of him who subjected it." Why is this thing going on like this? This thing out of pure craziness. Is the wrong place I am?
Eleven, twenty, the verse.
Acts eleven, verse twenty. Okay, sorry. "And some of them were men of Cyprus and Cyrene, which, when they were come to Antioch, spake unto the Grecians, preaching the law." Acts eleven. Hmm.
No, that's no one be reading. I said, "No, but this is not the right verse."
That you're looking for? Oh, okay.
That's it. Acts twenty-one, seven to fourteen.
Twenty-one, from seven to fourteen. Acts twenty-one, verse seven. "And when we had finished our course from Tyree, we came to Ptolemais and saluted the brethren, and abode with them one day. And the next day, we that were of Paul's company departed and came unto Caesarea, and we entered into the house of Philip the Evangelist, which was one of the seven, and abode with him. And the same man had four daughters, virgins, which did prophesy. And as we tarried there many days, there came down from Judea a certain prophet named Agabus. And when he was come unto us, he took Paul's girdle and bound his own hands and feet, and said, Thus said the Holy Ghost, so shall the Jews of Jerusalem bind the man that owneth this girdle, and shall deliver him into the hands of the Gentiles. And when we heard these things, both we and they of that place besought him not to go up to Jerusalem. When Paul answered, 'What mean ye to weep and to break mine heart? For I am ready not to be bound only, but also to die at Jerusalem for the name of the Lord Jesus,' fourteen. And when he would not be persuaded, we ceased saying, 'The will of the Lord be done.'"
All right. So me and you, me and you.
You and I, in our zeal to see God's will done, pray fervently. And all of a sudden, the answer we expecting is not what we get. They are in an environment of prayer and fasting and prophecy. And out of that environment, a prophet appears. And we, hear this, hear this. There is agreement. Four daughters are prophetesses. They are among the apostles. It's a healthy spiritual environment of great unity and oneness. And in the middle of that, a prophet gets up and says, "Yeah, man, the man who own the belt here, when him go up to Jerusalem, he'll am powder house. It is going to be hard for him up there." And like good Christians, the rest of them begin to say, "Paul, no bother go. No bother go." And Paul not afraid. Paul know that part of his call is to go wherever regardless. And brothers, sisters, sometimes we are not going to see the will of God immediately. Hello? Sometimes we just have to go through some things. But God does not leave you alone in those situations. It is out of your own prayer that you are going to find the peace to pursue whatever Him put in your heart. Is it always comfortable? No. Is it costly? And I look for no Holy Power crowd support either. Because some people love you too much, them think you're Because some people love you too much, them think you must just stay safe. Don't take no risk. Why would you want to endanger your life like that? Bigger purpose. When they see where Paul is at, them change their prayer. Make the will of God be done. The other, the other story, example, and somehow, I don't know why I write down Acts eleven, but forgive me. Has to do with Agabus too. Because he prophesied that famine was going to come. Persecution had started, people were being dispersed. Christians, believers were being dispersed. And in the middle of that, he prophesies that there is going to be a famine worldwide, beyond the region. And what do they do? The believers. Them give out of what them have to help other people. Is that the will of God? That we show compassion for others? Exactly. And sometimes, God going use you for answer the same prayer where you are praying. We leave it at that. Hello? That frightening, don't it? Yeah, man, God, we, we need a missionary in the prisons. You are it? No, God, you must have another person in mind. The more you pray about it, the more burden you have. Hello? So, our help in prayer is the word. Our help in prayer is the Spirit of God. Brethren, when the Bible say that he knows our hearts and God knows the mind of the Spirit, it's showing you how, how close we have been drawn into fellowship and relationship with him. It shows us how him can prepare we. So that people are looking and say, boy, are you that, you know? Eh? But you know what God putting in your heart and a man can't dissuade you. Can't change your mind. That come out of the, the fellowship where you have with him. And then thirdly, as a help, we have the people of God, one another. Eh? God put you in a community for a reason, you know? You know, the, the, the wickedest way Satan robbed the church of God? Me no want nobody know my business. Hello? Me not think want nobody hear what me a pray say. Hello? Are we think it's only certain people can pray for it? Lord have mercy. I hear, well, it has been told to me that some places you go, you join a line according to the offering you have for determine who pray for you. Hello? The church of Jesus Christ suffer some things, boy. Anyway. Matthew chapter eighteen, verse nineteen to verse twenty-one. Jesus again speaking, he says, again I say to you that if two of you agree on earth concerning anything that they ask, it will be done for them by my Father in heaven. There is a, a reason, a condition for that. For where two or three are gathered together in my name. I am there in the midst of them. So, firstly, two or three agree. There is no limit to what you can agree on. What the Bible say? Pray for money. Pray for the person who is your competition for the post. Withdraw the application. Pray for this provoking neighbor. Move with him, dog them. I, I thought, sorry. The Bible says concerning anything. Point made. My Father will do it. Hear this brethren. Our unity makes it possible for us to accomplish anything. Unity is bigger than just in the same place, at the same time, hearing the same things. Bigger than that. Heart of our unity is all of us wanting to see what God wants come to pass. Check out the danger of unity. Check out the, the power of unity. Start with the power. Genesis chapter one, verse twenty-six. God says, let us make man in our own image. Man is special in God's scheme of arrangements. He make man for fellowship. Hello? He make man to represent him in the world. Body, soul and spirit, Father, Son and Holy Ghost. Hmm? Exercising authority and dominion over the whole created order. And at evening time in the garden, before the serpent showed up, God would come check him in the cool of the day. John chapter one, verse one and verse two. The, the, in the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God. By him were all things made, and without him was nothing made that was made. More unity. More oneness. But oneness don't always have to be good. It is not always good. It is, it, it is, it is a potent tool, but it not always used for the right thing. That's why man gang upon man. Because man alone can't beat man, him go get some friends to come. A lie? You, you know how the thing run? Genesis chapter eleven, verse one to verse nine. The unity is so strong on bare face that again, God says, let us go down there, go see what them doing. Because some fellows who are united in their language, they all speak the same language, tired apparently for move up and down. Them said, make we stay here, so, and build a tower that will reach up into the heavens. Hello? Because apparently them tired for move up and down. Are finding it. Matthew, ah, Genesis chapter eleven. Verse five. This is God's comment on this tower that is being built in Babylon, on the plain of Shinar. Verse five, the Lord came down to see the city and the tower which the sons of men had built. And the Lord said, indeed the people are one, and they all have one language, and this is what they begin to do. Now, nothing that they propose to do will be withheld from them. Come, let us go down and there confuse their language that they may not understand one another's speech. The Lord scattered them. God in recognizing the sinful nature of mankind at this point in time, recognize also that their unity was going, presented the danger of them flying past them nest. Defeating the whole purpose for creation. For full up the whole earth, them man they want stay one place. And not only do they want to stay one place, them want to reach up into the heavens with them skyscraper. Unity misplaced, but unity's power made clear. Acts chapter two, verse one. Again, this is the, the, the preparation for the outpouring of the Holy Spirit. Bible says that they were in one accord, one physical place. But they had one desire, one expectation, to see what God had promised come to pass. Hebrews ten, verse thirty-five. We are encouraged not to forsake the assembling of ourselves together as the manner of some is, especially when you see the day approaching. Satan will scatter we and make we think we are right, cause we can surf the net. Hello? There is value, there is value, there is value brethren in, in, in assembly. And, and the writer makes the point directed by the Holy Spirit, especially as you see the day approaching, which day I talk, the day where me and you live. Me no want nobody for encourage me. Me no want nobody for me accountable to, because I know what to do. Hmm? And when, when me look upon you, me can't say something wrong, you know? Well, go on. When, when, when me hear you, your voice and see your face, me can, me, me can get by the spirit of God, a little more sensitivity as to where really I go on and I go. More than when you watch at me. Some hindrance is the prayer. Sin. Sin is a hindrance, the prayer. Unconfessed sin. Sin where we hug up. Nobody not know. I don't mean when I do it. Hello? Psalm sixty-six, seventeen and eighteen. Come and hear, all you who fear God, and I will declare what he has done for my soul. I cried to him with my mouth, and he was extolled with my tongue. Fellowship, praise him. And then verse eighteen, if I regard iniquity in my heart, the Lord will not hear. But certainly, God has heard me. He has attended to the voice of my prayer. Brethren, we know, we, 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 sin wicked, you hear? Them little foxes wicked. By the grace of God, no make we hold on upon none. I said, and find excuse for holding on to it, later side. And then we, we've looked at James four, one to four already. When we ask for selfish motives, out of wrong reasons, we, we want it because everybody else have it. We go because other people are go. Whatever it is, when the motive wrong, we don't get what we want, what we ask for. You have not because you ask not. Or you get it and, and you don't get it because you ask for the wrong reason. You get it so you can't, you, you ask for it so you can consume it, simply because you feel fit. And the big hindrance to Satan, to, 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 big hindrance to, to our prayers being answered, Satan and his host. Daniel chapter ten, verse twelve to verse twenty-four tells the story of Daniel praying, and the answer is being, has been released from the day he prayed. And three weeks after, the answer come. Because the prince of the ear over Persia, we're computing a little bit, the prince of the ear over Persia withstood the messenger of God. Another messenger had to come and help him fight to release the answer to Daniel's prayer. When we pray, we are engaging spiritual weapons against spiritual forces. Ephesians chapter six, verse twelve reminds us of that. Hmm? We're not wrestling against flesh and blood. The weapons of our warfare are not carnal, because the enemy is not carnal. Him may use carnal things to deceive we, but what him really want is to destroy we soul. Hmm? We wrap this up. We persevere in prayer because we appreciate, we understand the privilege it is for us to fellowship with God. Your father said, call unto me. I will answer thee. Show you great and mighty things that you do not know. This is the God of all the earth. The one who can put whole, him can span heaven. Bible says that him, him, him weigh the dust of the earth and number the sun on the seashore. Him call us into fellowship with himself. We persevere in prayer because of its power to bring the kingdom of God to earth and to accomplish his will among men. And we persevere in prayer because men ought always to pray and not to faint. When you stop pray, when you faint, when we stop praying and we faint, it's life leaking out away. The last thing me and you can do is pray. Think about it. No words have to be spoken. No posture has to be taken. Suppose you were, there was a prescribed posture for prayer. Supposing there was one place that God would hear you from. Ah? You had to lie down on your face, lie down on your back, lie down on your side, stand up on your head. Supposing prayer was like that. Supposing there was a formula, certain words that have to be said. Bible says, God knows our hearts. May not always to pray and not to faint. One of the things I find in praying is sometimes we get so tired. sometimes we get so tired that we can't pray. And it's not the length of your prayer that make it effective, you know. But you know say you must be talking to God little more. But you start smell the bakery, or you start smell the kitchen, or you remember something. Jesus had the same problem with the disciples. Urgent, earnest, dire times. He's about to be crucified. And the man them can't even pray one hour with him. Like me and you. Car, 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 we need long for pray now and then. Hello? Well, brethren, it's war. So get up and walk up and down and make it difficult for the enemy, for fire after you. If that is what it take. Hello? And, and hear me. I'm, I'm finding that as long as the Spirit of the Lord is prompting you to pray, pray. Forget about who I look upon you. Find a little quiet place and a little quiet time. If everybody want to go sleep, you go pray. If we're so busy, go bush, but pray. The Spirit Himself helps our weaknesses. Questions, comments? We're wrapping up. Anybody? No. No? All right. If, if you hear this, if you hear this later and you have questions, drop us a note, and we will do our best to respond. God is a faithful God. It is He who invites us to call to Him. Let's not miss the opportunity. So Father, we want to thank you. Sorry, sir. Karen Gunter? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Father, we want to thank you tonight that you are the God of compassion and the Father of all comfort. Visit the Gunters even though we pray with your consoling hand. You're not afraid of mourning. It's a blessed day who mourn, for they shall be comforted. And so we ask you, Lord, to send the streams of comfort out of this place to all your daughter, or sister. Help her to know that you are with her and the family. Be the kind of friend that only you can be. And raise up, Lord, the support and the strength that she will need in this time for the glory of your great name. And Lord, we want to thank you together before these witnesses for your goodness to us in providing this podium. Thank you, Lord, for the generosity that sparked it, because that your hand of favor might be upon the giver. That we part tonight. Remind us, Lord, in our trials, remind us in the pursuit of life to remember the access that we have to you, the privilege we have, the fellowship that this privilege allows. Because a, a man can't have a privilege, but it not mean nothing. Because him not use it. Him not appreciate the scope of it. Oh, God, save us, save us, we pray, from the obsession with things, so we can begin to look again and understand what your priorities are. Here our prayer we ask you, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. God bless you.